What's going on, boys and girls? What do we got in the chat? Who do we got in the chat? Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls of all ages. Who do we got in the chat? Alright, people, sorry. I was way over there. I don't have the volume set up like Otto does. So just got the sign right here. And then we're gonna flip it. Make sure I get that. So, I told you folks I was gonna step it up. So, we're out here.
Yeah, that's what they're hoping for. Gracias, gracias, muchas gracias. Gracias, gracias, muchas gracias.
I'm left in the parking lot.
Gracias, gracias, muchas gracias.
Wait, who? Which one? Wait, there? Which one? This one right here? The one with ponytail? Is it the one with the ponytail? Is it the new one?
Yes, it's the one with the ponytail!
I asked you if I could be served, but you haven't seen him yet.
Gracias, gracias, muchas gracias.
City manager, what's your name? She's from... I don't know. Because I'm not much anymore. This fucking city's entering the [inaudible]. They said it's gonna take years to take them to [inaudible]. And they don't... I was here by the wall and all, but these guys, they don't care about their [inaudible]. I want to be something that's just about the guys. They got violated, they turned in internal affairs, and then they turned it in, and then they lost it. They investigate themselves, I can't find it. I can't find it. I get three minutes. Yeah, I know, I've got it before. You gotta ask me, so why they have some issues around the first of us? They didn't say they don't have to go there. I feel like... Actually, you need to... That's not like legal. How do you have a judge talk to you? I'd tell them, but see, I wanted to have a lawsuit. We bought a house, right? 40,000 dollars, right? One of the locals here, one of the locals, and they sold this house, and they went to... Go anywhere, take it down. Yeah, so we got... Those are all types of 5,000s, like [inaudible]. See, the thing is, I wanted to take 40,000.
What's going on, ladies and gentlemen? I stepped over here so you guys can actually hear me. Because you can't hear me from that distance, I need to get a remote mic. You're right, Brandon Mitchell, I sure do need a new, a mic that could control it. Uh, I'm trying to get the same setup as Otto, I'm working on it. A few other people that are helping him are tied up. So, but we're, we're working on it. I just have this, uh, it's windy out here. I've got the, I've got the camera set back here leaning up against the, uh, the bench so it doesn't blow over. So, we got Carolina Fort Worth, Keebler. She's got her shit is fucked up and stuff, and of course, I've got my fire Tony Kane. Tony Kane is corrupt, sign out here. So, just so you guys can see. It doesn't say free Tony Kane, that says fire Tony Kane.
Good, I'm glad you guys are doing this, you know? I don't know about, I'm just hearing, I was really looking at more. I can't do it. Get to my baseball, let me see if I can watch it. There's no way. I don't like... As about the locals. Because I started hearing liberals in big towns, like [inaudible]. I meant to be safe.
Call it's over, record it. See, that's why I'm trying now. I'm going to look for gentleman, guy, she is so black.
I was trying to see if she's here yet. What's going on, my man?
What's all this about?
Fire Tony Kane. He runs everything in this town. He's corrupt, my man.
What can you say specifically about him?
He don't light his officers up when they break the law. He doesn't charge them. Same crime you get charged with, lose your, like, DUI. Oh, see, I gotta make sure the police see this one. See, they're here for me right now. A lot of incidents, man. I can't, I've gone back 20, 30 years on a lot of these cops, and they've got a single rider. So that's a, even a policy violation, somebody should have some sort of document. 30 years? You should have, you're not gonna have no blemish whatsoever. You're gonna have some sort of blemish.
Just like anything, like, I do plumbing, so like, you're not, they say if you're not messing up, you're not doing nothing.
Exactly, you know, sometimes you gotta break a, break a few eggs to make an omelet, you know? Or you're just going along and get along.
No, yeah, no, perfect.
But no, there, there was an officer last year that, uh, was drunk driving, got caught after she damaged some, uh, two different people's properties around South Highway 22. I got my full internal affairs investigation. And, uh, DPS got involved, Hill County got involved, because of the way the laws came out, because it was outside of the jurisdiction. They come to find out, she was drunk in her car, found out she was a cop, they wrote her a citation for failure to stay on the road. She got raised, and it did, she couldn't go on the road, they didn't charge her, they didn't, they didn't. And then she turns around and tracks this one down for trespassing on a, on a reported uncorroborated call. Because there is, uh, a case officer that said, you can't just go track someone down without talking to the complainant and, and observing criminal activity. He went down, tracked that another day, uh, another business, and then tried to demand a driver's license, and it's against the law, actually, for an officer to do that. There was an actual crime called official oppression. Acting outside the color of law with your badge on is a crime. And then, and then they last city council meeting, they get in here and say, oh, they've investigated themselves, and they found no wrongdoing. Really? I got it on video. She recorded it.
Is there any litigation for you this, or how?
Uh, can't really speak about that right now, but it's, 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 uh, possibly coming. The first initial steps are gonna take it. I just can't really talk about it. But I've also got other incidents and other people coming forward with their stories. So it's not just isolated, it's not like I originally thought it was. It's, it's an ongoing problem. One, one breadcrumb led to another breadcrumb, which led to another breadcrumb, which is just going through a, a whole loaf of bread now at this point. It's like no longer just a breadcrumb, now it's like really good bread. And I'm just finding it. I mean, I found a whole slew of stuff today.
Are you like an attorney or something?
No, 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 I just know a lot about the law, people's rights, man, I'm an activist. So, make sure out here, you know, filming this stuff, that's why I'm live streaming right now. Right here on, on YouTube. Everybody give, what's your name?
Edgar.
What is it?
Edgar.
Give everybody, Edgar, give, give everybody Edgar a one in the chat, give him a thumbs up for coming out and talking to us. Just to find out what was going on. You know, don't take my word for it, go watch my videos, I have the receipts. Just like your chief, uh, because you live here in Hillsborough?
Yeah, I'm from here.
So, like this right here? Every officer signs one of these, okay? This one is actually Tony Hills, or sorry, Tony Kane. That's actually, I'll give you that copy, like, this, this is the size one, that says, do what's right and defend the constitution, your rights, and uphold the law. But he ain't doing that, he's doing completely opposite. He's also the assistant city manager. He's the chief of police, the fire chief, the assistant city manager. Uh, he's also the vice chair over at the Hill University College. So, keep that, man, that's, that's, he signed that back in 2011, it was notarized, it's a, it's a legal document. I got it, I got it, uh, today from the records division, you can always request stuff.
Yeah, far right.
Oh, I actually requested it from, uh, the city clerk. You can request, uh, you go to open records at hillsboro tx.org, or, I think it's .org. And you can request anything, whether, if, if it's denied, they have to have valid reason to deny it. If not, you'll get those records. So, you know, whether it's, uh, officer's disciplinary records, a case, somebody's salary, somebody's employment dates. It's all a matter of public record, man.
It's a good deal, we have it.
And then they got public comments, and people, people, public comments are speaking at, at 6:00 PM. They're bringing in a slew of police officers just for me, I've got, uh, I got Detective Penny is back. And I just saw another, another patrol unit pull up out back.
I'm gonna run in there real quick, check it out.
I'm, I'm, I'm speaking first, first thing, man, they're gonna do the pledge allegiance, after they call everything to order, and they're gonna ask for public comments. I'm gonna take this bad chicken in there and go film my speech, and then I'm gonna come back out here, do what I'm doing right now.
What's the procedure? You gonna keep going and sit down, or?
Yeah, you go, you go in there and sit down right now.
I've never been once, so that's why I'm not asking.
Right now. Hey, where'd Carolina go? Hey, Carolina! That lady's there now with the forms, she better hurry.
I'm not running there.
Alright, good to meet you. He goes through this door right here, if you want.
That's the better door, or what?
That's the open door. This one, don't leave for nothing.
Okay, I got you, I appreciate that.
What's, oh, you don't have a time on you. What time you got? 4:44? 5:44, tell her hurry up. Because she always procrastinates, so hurry up and get her ass in there. Go, Carolina, get off the phone, whatever you're doing, get in there, she's here, go sign up.
My bodyguard, ready to go.
Who? Oh, I think he rode to the back.
My bodyguard, Brad, after the [inaudible].
She's in there. She's in there, Jasmine, God. Get both sides, both sides. There's your movement here. Move this off, Jesus. Ole, 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 ole! That's Mr. Heekle! You good?
Where's your camera?
Right there.
Hi, buddy! Hey, it's me, Carolina, how are y'all doing? We're here to tell these people what's up.
Nope, nope, city hall meeting's getting ready to start. This corrupt chief of police, fire, director of public safety, assistant city manager, [inaudible]. You got the city manager wrapped around a [inaudible]. He's very [inaudible] for all these criminal cops. I don't like criminal cops, you know, we gotta play by the rules, so. What's going on? What's that? Who? No, bootlicker went down there and made a left. No, bootlicker ain't coming back. What's going on? Another day, another council meeting, huh?
Yes, sir. I used to hear you do the prayer.
We'll be in there. What time you got?
Uh, I got about 6:00 till.
We'll be in there. Appreciate it.
You got six, you got six minutes.
Yes, you know what? Here's the thing. We got the sheriff department right here. Vice chair. You know, you know, you know, cause I'm the vice chair, so why are you giving a crank up? That's another thing. I already got my speech prepared. It's two minutes and forty-five seconds.
Still working on it, actually.
Still working on it. I'm double the force now, I'm thinking about the time, dude.
Okay, I was wondering, cause I'm like, okay, you got one.
I have the one up every time, so I can't.
But unless you have somebody that's press charges or it's on video, that's what I'm working on.
There you go, that's what I'm working on.
Hey, y'all.
Wait till you see the, the thing in the news getting ready to hit the next week or two. About the Tarrant County Assistant District Attorney getting charged. That was me.
Ah, Tarrant County, yeah.
Oh, he's, that district attorney's as cryptic as they come.
Well, once you get a area up.
I'll see y'all in a few minutes. Okay, guys. I'm gonna step inside real quick, cause this meeting's getting ready to start. Hopefully you guys can hear what's going on.
That's a big blessing, I understand. I mean, it was great that she was doing it herself. I didn't, she's only on the side.
Yeah. Look at the dirty pig. Smile now, cause you won't be smiling later. Get the nice little thumbnail right there.
Okay, 6:02, we'll call the jury, we still have the meeting of Hillsboro City Council. For the bottom of the agenda is the invitation given by Pastor Michael Nick of Christ with the Church. Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and merciful God, we pray for your guidance and wisdom for all who are gathered here this evening, especially for our mayor, our city manager, and all, all of the members of our city council. In all the presentations, discussions, and decisions that are made here this evening will benefit and serve the needs of all who live, work, and travel through the city of Hillsborough. We pray for your guidance and wisdom also for our president, our governor, our national state senators, representatives, our judges, and all public servants. Protect our local police officers, firefighters, all first responders and law enforcement officials, and the men and women in our military, especially those who are deployed far from home. In all things and at all times, we make everything that we do, say, and say be inspired by your love and your care. In true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next guy on the agenda, here's statements from persons wishing to address the council. We got two. Uh, Basil Zangara. Second thing, Mr. Zangara, just please limit your comments to three minutes and the council can't.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council members. My name is Basil Zangaria. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. And I'm here again because the citizens of Hillsborough deserve better than what we're given from our Department of Public Safety. Let me be absolutely clear. There is a culture of cover-up and misconduct through the Hillsborough Police Department. And it starts at the top with Chief Tony Kane. Over and over, when an officer violates the law, no action is taken unless the misconduct becomes so obvious, Tony Kane has to write them up just to cover him somewhere. And protect that officer from being held criminally accountable. Why, why are the citizens, sorry. Why are there no other citizen complaints on record against these officers? Because Major Clay Sparks Rattune refuses to accept them. That's not transparency, that's obstruction. City manager Megan Henderson told me personally that complaints would be accepted and investigations would take place when there were legitimate questions about officer conduct. But then at the last city council meeting, she stood in front of the public and claimed that April 16th incident was investigated and wrongdoing was done. Despite the fact that internal affairs complaints were refused and she had accepted it directly from me, that's not oversight, that's collusion. Let me remind you what the law says. Texas Penal Code 39.03, official repression. It is a crime for a public servant to knowingly violate the rights of a citizen under colored law. Penal Code 30.05, criminal trespass, it's not a crime until a person is properly notified and refuses to leave. Penal Code 38.02, failure to identify, it's only a crime after someone is lawfully arrested. And the US Supreme Court in Terryville, Ohio, in Florida versus J.L., makes it crystal clear officers must have reasonable or articulate suspicion of a crime to contain somebody and probable cause to arrest. So let's talk about the case of Terry Dickman. Officers did not initiate this call through 911 nor the non-emergency system. It was fabricated from a private grudge and never logged properly. Officer Brittany Gardner falsely swore and affidavit that she saw Terry Dickman commit illegal dumping. When she actually had to track him down along with Anderson, her training officer, that's perjury. That's misconduct, and that's the department out of control. Hillsborough has a serious police conduct and cover-up problem. And I've stood here before demanding that you fire Chief Tony Kane. And I'll say at the end of the night, this man is manipulating the council, manipulating the city manager, and he's manipulating the people that have elected all of you guys to protect them. This council won't act and the district attorney Mark Pratt won't investigate, cause that's my next step. Then I will take this to the Texas Rangers and your training general's office, cause it's all seriousness. Time for the warning zone. Just ask the Fort Worth Police Department and the Tarrant County DA's office what happened to you with your corruption. Change is coming whether you like it or not. You either fix the problem or I'll go before you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have one more, uh, statements from a Carolina library there. And the same as, uh, Mr. Zangara.
Alright, as most people know. As most people know, here are women, and most people know here are women, have their rights quietly reneged. Hillsborough police officers threatened her with arrest and she did not end herself. Statute of guilty citizens, only has to identify and place an arrest. So complaints were made and it was determined that the police officer did no wrongdoing. That's all he said. Cause she didn't do nothing wrong. Uh, but, but what we all know is, how did they determine this? Who determined this? Was it the chief with the mail order college diploma? Was it the assistant city manager with the mail delivery diploma, coach diploma? Alright, what answers some transparency and holding themselves accountable should have been something like this. After our investigation, each of our officers doesn't have a clue what their guilty status is. And even those who trust her, turn around, law officers. Therefore, we have decided to create a symptom that all our officers must be, must attend so that they can reach her and never have to buy it, because we never want to die by anybody's rights ever. That's what they should say. So Tony would then have to take off his assistant manager hat and put on his chief hat. And he has to go further to enter the public with this perjury scenario. You want him to? He would call that instructor out of the college community college. That instructor that has the mail order, coach diploma, he'd get guilty status in our. And then that guy had, you know, built a city for it. That's what would happen if this were two scenario. But anyways, we all know that y'all hate the outsider scenario. You think that would just come in and ruin things for everybody. You're messing things up. But we talked to all our residents here, and you know what we found out? We found out that no one knows the mayor's name. Maybe because there's like 200 people loaded. They all, they know that lady up there. They all know her. Everyone knows that woman's name. Everyone knows her name. And he told us lots of stories about how the police threw them over. And he told us that the police here don't even have a dad, that they hate citizens, they're openly being disrespectful to them. And then we asked him, well, why is everyone here so low? And they said, because we depend on each other. We avoid calling the cops at all costs. That's what the practice is here. So now the city manager needs to put on her pink girl panties and with a good budget determine if they're paying more out for the police than what they're bringing in fines. And I guarantee you, you're paying so much more than that than what they're bringing in as fines. So I say abolish a police department, bring the county laws into the policing, cause they're not policing. They're just keeping fines out and hanging around. They don't have any kind of community license. They don't have any community teaching about how to, how to figure out your, all that stuff. They don't have any of those programs. They're just depending on force and being moved to people to get things done. But they're not the ones bringing the crime down. The people are depending on each other. So that's what your city manager needs to do. Because, because these, these police are just winning a lot because they don't have a leader, because he's got two or four white hats on. He's not even there to monitor them, right? So they know that if they do anything wrong, they don't determine that they need to do anything wrong.
Ten seconds.
And so, bring the county laws into your policing, get rid of this police department. Get rid of this police department, and guess what? Taxes will be down big time. Taxes will be down so much, I just want that to be for the police. I can't touch. Go away, Tony.
Moving along to the seventh agenda, deliberate counter resolution.
Everybody knows her name.
Yeah, I'm going outside too. Damn, she really stirred up the pot in there. Oh shit, I forgot my sign in there. Here, let me go get my sign.
Gotta hurry up, or they're throwing trash.
Yeah.
What you did, Basil? Hey, buddy! Hey, buddy!
All right, guys, I'm back. I had to go get my sign. Forgot it inside.
Did you run, did you run up? The red yellow car way.
Too fast, too fast.
Shut up.
You did too fast. Yeah, you did, you went too fast. I think if you would have slowed it down a little bit better, it would have been great, because you know what, you pointed out some good shit, but here's the problem. Them dumkins in there, I mean the bumpkins?
Nobody would look at me.
It's just no one could understand what you were saying.
Well shit, don't say that.
You're a city person. You gotta slow your speech down.
You always, always, always complain.
It's not complaining, it's criticizing.
Ask them if they understand me.
I, I had a hard time, I was right behind you. I was trying to focus when you said.
Sure, Basil.
Okay, Carolina. Yeah, of course I'm live. I'm gonna criticize you whether I'm on camera or behind camera. Put a 1 in the chat if you thought she talked too fast. 2, if you heard her nice and clear. How about that? I'll let the people decide. Don't take my word for it, let the people decide. Uh-oh. 911.
Brownies smell shit.
Smell bacon. Bacon.
He don't smell bacon, he smell.
Bacon.
He smell shit. What you doing? He must have came on early.
They're giving you, they're giving you twos in the chat, so.
Yeah, but I heard she has the same question, her cat, they could say the opposite. Her cat would say the opposite.
No, 2 is saying that she spoke clear enough.
Oh, okay. I thought you said 2 was.
Ah, doggy.
Another veteran, another dog owner, I love it. Mine's just a car.
He's a, he's a fireman, you can tell.
Oh, it's that side right there.
It's one guy.
That's a, an elder brownie.
She said already the nar.
That's an elder brownie.
That's a bigger brownie.
Brownie's gonna look like when he gets those few years on.
Brownie's not gonna get that big.
He said fuck that, he's on our side.
You going back and playing yours?
Yeah.
I was standing right behind you, I wanted to get it nice, loud, and clear.
You looking at the agenda tonight?
No. It doesn't matter, they're gonna sit there and say, oh, the guy just blew red, oh, look at that. Blew that stop sign right by the city hall. I got it on camera. I was sitting behind you laughing, it's like when you blew into the microphone. And right there at the end, when you start pointing. He waved, I think he agrees.
They all know her. They all know that one's name.
Hey, but you see how we both called out Megan?
Yeah.
Now shit's gonna start being focused to her. You said, I can't believe you said her big girl panting, I started laughing.
Yeah, abolish the police department, bring in the county laws.
That county just put his thumbs up when he saw that, so there must be some other stuff going on.
They don't have a leader, they're running them up because they don't have a leader there.
Right.
No one's gonna wanna turn in. So if they don't, they can turn, they can turn in, they have to, they don't want to. They hear the taxes were gonna take down so much, still got that.
That was a, that was a good point you kicked off.
Think about how the taxes will go down if they get rid of the police department here. You know? Little shit. Oh shit, oh shit!
Your papers.
I need my papers, because I need what's on the back of them.
They're flying all over, they're at the Jeep, better hurry up. Step on it, there you go. I think Tony thinks I got a hard on for him. You know I'm living in his head rent-free. Like Harvey lives in Lowry's head, I'm living in Tony's. Yeah, I'm going back to him.
That was him that came in, and when I walked back, I stood right where they could see me with a sign like this. Tony walked right over to Dominique, she got out of the car, and they started talking. Whispering, secrets!
Why don't you get a sign for all Christ's sake, woman?
You gotta, you left a pin in there? You left a pin in the back of the.
The pin's in the back with the... Go in the back, there's a pin and a board. All the way in the back, Carolina. Ole, 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 ole! What do you guys think? Look at that, that's on TV, you leveled up a level. Good job, keep the texts going. The more you text, the more you level up. Guess what? It's only slander if it ain't true. What do you think slander is? It's defamation. All right, it's not so hot anymore, I can move this up a little bit. Sun's going down a little bit.
Thank you so much for listening, it's been so good to you. I know I have to like that part where I said, but they all know her name! 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 They all know her name.
Hey, y'all, can you get it done?
I can't, I can't.
Fire the crew up, chief.
Wow, that's weird!
Wow, man!
That's right, that's right.
Make sure.
That was so good, I told him.
Get right here.
I know, I know y'all hate outsiders.
Get out of my shot, I want the cars.
I know y'all hate outsiders. Ah, golly!
I'm chilling quite from here. First time I saw him from here though, that city council meeting. And they from here today.
They're from here tonight?
They from here today, they knew on Saturday. But they're like, I think it was the week. I think it was that Saturday after or the...
Hey, guys, look at the courthouse.
Is my bodyguard, I was wondering where he was at? Damn, I was feeling lonely. I even asked him to make sure he bring my bodyguard. What you doing? Go figure. Come on, listen. There, I'll walk down there.
That's right! He said fucked, don't he? Hey, there goes another one right there.
I think I won't walk down into the courthouse.
He's over there, he's over at the courthouse. The cop for the city, look, look, the cop was there. Sitting there watching us. And then he got two cops inside.
Fire the police chief.
I told, I told them, right before the meeting, I wanted my bodyguard out here. I'm gonna walk down into the courthouse.
So ladies and gentlemen, we just had someone roll down the window and say, F Tony Kane, so. Thought that was, uh, Otto? Nope, just the other watchdog. So if you watch, Carolina and Keebler are walking down to where this cop is, sitting there watching us. Right there in the picture. Right there where the cop is at. Keep me streaming, guys, keep me streaming. That lady waved at me like I was nuts. So I've got my sign above it, I'm just trying to get the reaction of people over here. Turn your head, corruption licks. Corruption lick boots. Thank you, Josephine. I'm reading some of the comments right now. Robert. We got another slew of traffic coming this way. I'm gonna hold the sign right above the camera. Getting the message out, getting the message out. It's making Tony very nervous. Alright, we don't got a whole lot of cars coming this way, guys, but I'm, I'm gonna talk to you here. So, it's kinda slowed down a little bit. I'm just checking inside. To see if they're almost done, because we're gonna go ahead and try to confront Tony Kane, Dominique Anderson once again. Policing is already too aggressive. Brownie's inside the car, right there. The third car over. He's over there with, with his uncle Bear. How about some, ole, 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 ole? Trying to move this up a little bit more. Here we go. Did you call the fucking cops?
Hello, happy F the police day. Good luck to whatever your narrative is. I hope you get close to your expected outcome.
Alright, I'm back over here talking to y'all. Just waiting for this meeting to cut out. There's it, there you go, man. Get rid of that crushed son of a gun, it'll be a bad crowd. There's a lot of people that don't like Tony Kane. Lane may have stepped over the line, but throwing all those additional charges at him is just pure retaliation and, and malicious prosecution. Orchid bed, alright. Get all the law. Got some juicy stuff coming, guys. Wait till the next meeting. I didn't bring my backup charger, damn it. Oh, you know what? I forgot to put this on.